City of Marine City Commission Meeting to Order, Marine City Fire Hall, Thursday, February 7, 2019, 7:00 PM. Could please stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And could we have a brief moment of silence for our dearly departed? Roll call, please.
Mayor Vanabash.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Flossin.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner McCann.
Here.
All right, moving on to communications. I need a motion to receive and file communications.
So move.
Support.
Questions or concerns on communications? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carry. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the city commission. Please state your name and address. Please limit your comments to five minutes. This time, this is the time for you to raise issues. The commission will not respond, but will forward your issues to the necessary places. So, anyone else like to? Mr. Moran.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. I'm Joe Moran, 710 Pleasant Street in Marine City.
I can't.
I noticed that you have a discussion tonight on recreational marijuana, and I wanted to bring up some bullet points. Neither pro nor con, but some points for discussion that I think merit your attention. I'm passing around a cartoon that I came across in a weekly news magazine, and for the audience, it is a picture of a W.C. Fields-type character standing on an old-fashioned medicine wagon that says marijuana legalization and snake oil underneath it. And he's holding up a small bottle of pot that says guaranteed to raise revenue and lower crime without increasing drug use, impaired drivers, or fatal crashes. So you may take that as a, for what it's worth. We had a vote in November that legalized private use of marijuana. Lest we understand that as a mandate, we need to recognize that even though 60% of the voters approved that proposal, only 31% of the registered voters fall into that group. So we have less than one out of three, fewer than one out of three people, registered voters in Marine City who supported the legalization. That proposition said nothing about a mandate to having sales within Marine City. That's entirely up for grabs. That was not part of the mandate from that proposal. Is there an opportunity to increase revenue for the city of Detroit? That's kind of an unknown yet at this point as to how much the city might gain for participating in marijuana sales, growth, or preparation. But that has to be weighed against the cost of policing those activities, for one thing. So that needs to be part of our debate. It's not only what do we bring in, but what is it going to cost us to regulate that activity? Does the legislation allow us to choose only to grow or process, or do we have to open ourselves up to all of that activity? We have very little land available in the city limits that I think would make growth a profitable enterprise, but we certainly have industrial properties that might make processing profitable. So that's something to look at. We have people that use marijuana medically and use it for pleasure. They have the right to do so. They will continue to do so whether they buy it in Marine City or not. They're entitled to grow their own, is my understanding, to a limited extent, and they can buy it elsewhere, wherever they're buying it now. So there's no pressure on the city to accommodate those people who are already being accommodated in other ways. When you listen to, myself included, people that are pro or con, you need to look at their motivation. Why are they one side or the other? People that are pro are very often interested in their profit, not so much the city's profit or welfare. People that are against it are against it maybe largely out of fear of the unknown. They don't know what that's going to do in terms of their quality of life here in the city, and, you know, it's going to be difficult to deal with those fears. The law enforcement experts that have been up here talking about it, they're experts in their field, and we need to seriously consider their point of view. You mentioned the right for people to do business. That right is not absolute. We would legislate a porn shop, or, you know, a dance hall, or something like that. So, and anyway, those are some things to think about. I don't know that we're ready to make a decision yet, but it's certainly an issue that's worthy of further debate. I have one more thing to add. This is from the U.S. Coast Guard. For those of you coming this spring that think that you're going to take this new law and smoke where you will, federal jurisdiction still covers the waterways. So you cannot be on a boat, use a boat, or be on a dock and smoking marijuana. So just keep that in your pipe and smoke it. Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, Erica Delang, Marine City Area Chamber. And with me is our Vice President of our Board, Laura Scatia, and our Treasurer, Curtis McBride. And on behalf of the Chamber, we would like to congratulate the City of Marine City for being our member spotlight this month for February. So we would like to ask our mayor and city commissioners and employees to please come forward so we can take a picture and present you with this beautiful banner and this beautiful plaque. It's got, it's on wheels.
Yeah, about right.
Now you're just going to scoot out of here, aren't you? Erica, you're just going to leave us now? Mm-hmm. Curtis, mm-hmm. Anyone else like to speak in public comment? Moving on to approval of the agenda.
Make a motion that we approve our agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions, corrections on the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carry. Moving on to approval of the city commission regular meeting, January 17.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Support.
Corrections or deletions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carry. Moving on to the consent agenda. We've got a business license for Ellis Country Oven and a charitable gaming license for Historical Society. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions or concerns on it? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCann?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes. Moving on to unfinished business, and we'll start with the mosaic project. Mr. Davis?
Yes, working with Representative from the Historical Society, I redrafted the installation and maintenance agreement to meet the concerns raised by the commission at the last meeting and did inject a few additional positions that I believe are beneficial to both parties. We have a good description of maintenance, a good description of removal. I have run this by the representatives of the Historical Society, and it has been approved from their end. And I would recommend we get this agreement in place. It projects the possibility of eight mosaics and governs our relationship to those if and when they're installed, knowing that they're not installed yet, but it would be good to have this in place before they're installed.
Can I get a motion or of some type right now, just so we can discuss it?
I'll make a motion to approve the installation and maintenance agreement for the mosaic project as presented.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions for the city attorney out?
So currently, all we're going to do is approve this. We haven't really approved the project.
That's correct. If you look at the whereas clauses, it begins with the history that they've commissioned up to eight mosaics, right? And that they are going to, if you go to the fourth whereas, the exact and final locations of the mosaic settings may vary, and that there will eventually be an exhibit that will say where they are. I know you're still in the process of doing that with the Historical Society, but I believe the Historical Society also wants to have some assurance that there'll be a maintenance agreement in place as well. So if it never comes to be, then you will have nothing to install and maintain. But right now, I think we're just looking at the agreement.
Anyone else have any questions or concerns on it? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCann?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
All right, moving on to the second reading and adoption of ordinance 2019-001, general city ordinance, merchandise and materials, non-sidewalks, traffic and motor vehicles, parking, and storage of commercial vehicles, health and sanitation, nuisance, grass cutting, building regulations, and construction. Can I get a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-001. Support.
Motion support. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCann?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Moving on to second reading of ordinance number 2019-002, zoning ordinance, miscellaneous changes, including map amendment.
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance number 2019-002.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions or concerns on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCann?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
All right, moving on to body cameras.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So there's a, this is such a long, complex process that we've been through. I know the last time I was here, we briefly spoke about it. I guess I should back up and, so currently, we have three in-car cameras that are run by L3. The county wrote a grant to purchase L3 body cameras. We got the body cameras, they sat, collected dust. We were promised to get the new ones. New ones were pushed out, caught on fire, et cetera. So returned those, got refunded our money to be used towards the purchase of new body cameras. So over the last month, in January, we met with three separate companies, GTAC, WatchGuard, and Provision. We were able to see the new technology that's out there, how each of them worked, the product themselves. And GTAC was by far, in my opinion, I know a couple other agencies are going to GTAC, but whether or not they get approval to do it remains to be seen. So what I'm asking for is the waiver for the competitive for GTAC, but with that, you have to understand that there's going to come a legacy cost with the storage. At currently, how GTAC quoted it out was for 15 Gs, 15 gigs of storage per body cam is $15. It's the deal that he could get us. The other companies weren't remotely even close to that, but that's a guarantee that can only last for so long. I don't know at what point that number could double, et cetera. So initially, right now, if I get the six body cameras and the three in-car cameras, we have to pay for nine types of storage, which is up in the cloud. The system's phenomenal. Click of a button, and we can share a video to a prosecutor. It's really unique how this system works. So if you add all that up, it's, right now, it's $1,000, I believe, $1,620. That's going to be reoccurring for so many years, depending if within three years they say, hey, by the way, that $15 a month is now going to be 30. There's no guarantees with that. So what I am asking for is the waiver. If you guys will allow, you know, that reoccurring legacy cost. And that's going to be put in the budget. So currently, I guess some of that's going to get eaten up because what we currently pay on our budget with L3 for the back office support and software agreement maintenance is about $1,800. That number can go away and will eat kind of the $1,620. So we'll be kind of saving about $180 initially. But again, I have no guarantees if that number is ever going to double or go up in the future. I have none. So I'm asking for the waiver for the GTAC camera for now.
All right. Now we're doing car?
Well.
You've kept them together?
I've kept them together. I did budget, so this budget year, I budgeted some salvage vehicle funds to fund the purchase of the in-car cameras, which was about $19,000 or something. So there is money already set aside for that. And then the remainder of what that was is there's some donation money is going to be used, and then the $3,000 for the grant will be used to purchase the body cameras. It's already funded, it's already in the budget for that.
Now, have you got any policies written yet for the?
Not yet. I was waiting to find out which camera we're going to go with because the procedure portion of it can't be written until I know which camera we're using.
Do they assist you in writing?
No. We're going to try to get together as agencies and do a countywide policy, so we're all on the same page with redaction and storage and all that stuff.
And how long is the, how long do we have to store this data?
It depends on the nature. If it's a simple traffic stop with a verbal warning, 60 days. And then it can go away. Founding cases got to be kept for at least 10 years.
10 years?
But if that's the case, we can download it to a disk and just put it in a case file. So it doesn't need to be kept forever on the cloud side of things. It's a complicated process, but I think it's very beneficial. But again, my concern is in three to five years, they're not going to come and say, we're doubling your cost for storage.
I guess I would have liked to have seen a sheet where you had all the figures for each one. Because, I mean, even if I look at this, I'm going for one here that's, I guess it's what? This Provision, you've got 3912, is that just, that's for all three? And then you've got 1,774, six body cams?
Is that still in Provision?
Yeah. There's two sheets in there. Then if I jump to GTAC, I'm looking at 25 grand. And if I jump to the next one, it's 42,000. So I'm trying to find a...
Provision, the quote that you have, I believe, Provision did not quote for the in-car cameras.
This first sheet is the in-car. Says in-car video base kit, one of two, the first.
Oh, for the 3912?
And then the next two pages, or one page, is for the body camera. Quantity six, $295 a unit, 1770.
So that's, that's the one we're not buying?
That's the one we're not buying. So if you look at GTAC, the GTAC quote, I think, came out to about $285 per body camera.
So that's the ITS, is your provider?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of other stuff there, too.
Well, that's all include, yeah. He was way more detailed in his quote. What I didn't like about Provision is their body camera actually had an LED screen on the back, and they said that if that cracks and some type of a tussle, that it's not warranted.
I know, I'm just going from 1770 to...
But, so the Provision quote, if you look at their storage cost, it's $55 per unit, per month, which is astronomical cost for a small agency.
Well, and then on the GTAC, it says installation ad included, and neither is handling and any other fee, so how do we know that's the total cost?
Well, installation will be all separate through that synergy company that are currently used for upfitting in the vehicle.
So the total for the GTAC is 25,049.57? 25,000.
Let me find it. The GTAC total quote is 25,049. Yes.
I'm just looking for the differences between these. I mean, and then the WatchGuard, that's 42,000.
But, so the bottom line is Provision probably will be cheaper, but we'll be paying more in storage fees. If you do the $55 per unit, times that by nine, times that by 12, you're getting, what, $6,000, $7,000 in change of 1620.
For the, are you talking in-car or the body cams?
It's storage for all nine.
Because it says here 15 per month per device.
That's for?
In-car.
In-car.
Okay.
That's for everything, for GTAC. Is that what you're referencing?
No, I'm looking at your Provision. It says right down here at the bottom.
That's a whole, that's a whole separate program.
I guess I would have liked a better breakdown on one sheet that showed me the figures, the total cost to store. See what I'm saying? Instead of, I mean, this is...
Compare all three fours.
Yeah, it would have been a little easier to...
Chief, so 25,000 for GTAC. You're saying that you have that money set aside already?
I do, yes. And that it will be primarily pulled out of the salvage vehicle funds, which is a separate line item in my budget.
After the, how long is the term at the $15 rate? You get the 15 gigs, $15 per cam?
He couldn't guarantee anything to me on the phone.
So even at a first year, it could go up, is what you're saying?
Mm-hmm. I read an article in the Washington Post that a lot of smaller agencies are actually going away from body cameras because of storage costs.
So if you upload it to the cloud, are you, and you switch companies at some point because of the price, are you able to, are you able to recapture that information? Or is that theirs and they keep it?
Theirs and they keep it.
So you have no access to it anymore?
None, because I'm not paying that fee anymore.
Right.
Unless we download it and put it in the file.
And that's, they'll let you do that?
Yes. As long as we're paying them, yes, as long as we're paying the fee, we have access to the videos which we're able to download.
So if we had, if we had a complicated case, we would discuss it, and we would download it and keep it with the file separately, so that we would never lose it.
Jim, at this time, do you think it's, should we move forward with the body cams? With a lot of the information, I've read the same thing that you're stating?
Bare minimum, I need in-car cameras.
Right.
Because those, what I currently have, those are end of life and need to be upgraded. We've had those for eight to 10 years.
I don't think anybody's arguing that.
The body cameras, I'm 50/50 on. I mean, has it really come a time in this department where we could use them? I can think of one.
Yes.
But we still had in-car camera to capture that. If that incident would have been off-screen, I mean, I had an officer, you know, involved shooting who was cleared in 13 days because we had in-car video.
Right.
I believe body cameras are beneficial. I'm just leery on these costs.
Let me ask you this. Is, if, say tonight, we did the in-car units, do you have time for us to still make a decision on the others?
Absolutely. Yep, but just keep in mind, though, if I go forward with GTAC and get the in-car cameras, we're still going to be paying the $15 for the three units.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm good with that. If you want to take your time on that decision, I'm absolutely fine with.
Because, and I think it'll help you get some, your paperwork ahead, you know, Ray. If we buy a GTAC here, more than likely, you know, for doing policy and procedure for body cams, you could probably write it off the GTAC.
I could. So if I get approval tonight just to buy the in-car cameras, I can't go to another body camera.
Absolutely.
I want the two to marry each other.
Right.
One system.
I want to put that out to light.
If I get the GTAC tonight, I will start writing the body camera policy just in case there's an approval in the future.
But like, there's been so many that have opted out, or starting to opt out of body cams.
And for instance, I talked to another local chief, and I don't want to say the department, but he said he's talked to most of his commissioners, and he doesn't think he's going to get approval for the body cameras because of his storage costs. And his are going to be nine or 10 times more than what mine are going to be. So he's worried. No, he's not going to be able to get them. I think they're beneficial. I just don't, I don't like that cost. I don't like that, we don't have a guarantee. Or, you know, so I've also talked to this rep from GTAC, and I said, well, what if we get a server and just house it at the department where the current one's at? You know, the L3 one? And he goes, sure, not a problem, but that's $10,000 to $12,000. So where do we go from there? Do we house it here?
And how far maxes out that server?
Well, we can, you know, we can set the retention cycle, so if it's a simple traffic stop, it's 60 days, that video, bye-bye, gone. So it's not holding up. It's currently how it's set up now, that at a certain timeframe, videos are disappearing.
Do you have to flag the video, so?
Yes. I download them almost right away, and then, so we've got the ability to mark them in the patrol car, you know, whether it's a verbal warning, civil, you know, a ticket or other. If it's marked other, it's kept for, I think, 180 days. So we've got the ability to go back and get it. But that's, it's a second option if we want... a second option if we want to. But I don't have the money currently for attended twelve-thousand-dollar server.
Any other thoughts from the commission?
I'm, I'm, just so you know, I'm going to have to make some phone calls on Monday to find out. Because Nikki Falk runs, runs this grant.
Right.
And she said this money needs to be spent quickly.
True. But I mean, they've been dragging their fee for how long?
Well, we just got the refund from it. So, but, but it's our, and on her books, that money's already been spent, but it's been refunded. And she's like, we, we, that money needs to get spent. So I'm like, well, what if we don't get approval for it, Nikki?
Will in-car qualify for?
No, because the grant was specific for body cameras. Yeah.
Well, that's three thousand, right?
Three thousand.
The grants money?
Change, yeah.
But we could rush that.
We could wait a month. Yeah. We can wait a month. I would probably say month at tops.
I would like to see a motion to at least tonight do the in-car cameras and hold off on the, um, body cams for now until we can get some more. And see what some of the other communities are doing, too. Maybe lean on them a little bit and see.
So basically, what you need is you need a motion to waive the competitive bid process for the purchase of three GTAC in-car cameras.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Lisa.
Um, quick thing. Can you explain, since we have a new board, about
So
waiving?
When you hear the term waiving, the competitive bid process is a, a system in place that requires a unanimous vote. As the city commission, we, we do operate under a bid process, and we do normally require that a bid process be presented. When we have unique items for purchase, return items, or second uses from same companies, or there's only one provider of a product, uh, unique to, to a need of the, of the city, we waive the competitive bid process, um, by a separate vote, by a separate motion. So this evening, although there has been discussion of three bids, um, the chief is asking that we waive the competitive bid processing for the car camera portion of this, of this request. That has to be a separate motion, separate vote, and you have to pass that unanimously in order to go to the second motion, which would be the actual motion on the purchase.
Okay. So can we get a motion to waive the competitive bids on just the in-car cameras?
Uh, I make a motion that we waive the competitive, competitive bid process for the purchase of three GTAC in-car cameras.
Support.
Motion support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner Burcannon?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Oh, one more. Can you explain what happens if one of us would have voted against it?
It would have failed.
Well, we would have had, he would have had to go out for bids.
Correct. Sealed, sealed bids?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would have just forced him.
And by the way, this requirement comes out of your charter.
Now we need a motion to approve the purchase of the GTAC.
Do we know what the total is without the body cam?
I don't have that number. No. I just have a total quote with, just with everything involved.
Just trying to see if it's on here. It'd be less sixteen eighty-one, right? It looks like anything that would be, have a three on it. This is body. Well, there's different items. That's the problem. So...
I believe it was just under twenty thousand.
Now the warranty. This, these.
Is it my letter?
Hmm?
Is it my letter I drafted? Did I separate it in my letter? No. Sorry?
Yeah.
Make it easier, yeah.
Yeah. Just be good to give that.
How's the warranty on your phone?
She was using it as a calculator for us.
So how are we going to handle this?
I, I know it won't exceed twenty thousand.
I know, but we normally have to give a figure.
The, the
Yeah. Okay. Let's add it all up and see what happens. I would cut out this and these. These are all body camera, body camera.
Mm-hmm.
Looks like it's right around eighteen thousand dollars for the camera stuff, for the body camera stuff. That's rough, right around eighteen thousand for the body camera stuff.
Are you going to need to rewrite anything for cloud storage for your policy procedures for this?
Little bit.
Little bit?
Yeah. Just a few tweaks here and there.
Is there a security thing that you've got to worry about with the cloud at all, or?
Nope.
No.
Chief, is the total cost for what you're asking for tonight under twenty?
Under twenty thousand.
You could make a motion to approve it not to exceed twenty and bring back a final cost at the next meeting for ratification.
Good. I'm going to add that to your motion.
Sure.
So the chief, you'd have to bring back the final cost and have it ratified at the next meeting.
Will do.
Make it under twenty.
Absolutely.
Even if it's not.
It will be under twenty.
Okay.
Even if it's not.
Okay, you ready?
I came up with twenty thousand for twenty-three. So if it's under that
My pocketbook.
It's only four hundred and twenty-three dollars.
I, I do believe at one point, I, I, I think I have the quote in my email at the department. I could probably get it for you before the meeting is ended, from a, from a previous quote from a couple of weeks ago. And I, I believe it was under twenty thousand.
Well, do the, for now. We'll do it for now. We'll reply the call, the exact cost at the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. I make a motion to, um, approve the, uh, the purchase of three GTAC in-car cameras not to exceed twenty thousand dollars, as long as we get, um, the pricing, the exact pricing at our next meeting.
And ratified by another vote.
Okay. And ratify it by another vote.
And I'll support all those amendments.
Anybody have any more questions on the in-car cameras from GTAC? Hearing non-roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Burcannon?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and sorry for the confusion.
Okay, don't leave.
Don't do it again. Don't eat it.
Don't eat it. You may be asked questions on this. Yeah, you're getting dragged into it. Stay there. Next, we're moving on to memo from Charles Davis on marijuana, recreational marijuana.
Commissioners, I, I have presented, um, this memo. It was dated January sixteen, two thousand nineteen. I've tried to keep, uh, the city manager aware of anything else that I've received with respect to this issue. Uh, I, I have faced this issue in several communities, and I would start off by saying the same thing. We all come to the issue of marijuana with independent thinking, independent past, independent current thoughts on whether or not marijuana should be legal or illegal. This is really before you with respect to a zoning issue at this juncture. Uh, the state of Michigan has already casted its vote and has presented, um, legislation that is not fulfilled yet until December of two thousand nineteen, when they issue their final regulations. In the meantime, one of two things, in my opinion, has to be happening, uh, in this city and in other municipalities. We need to be either directing our planning commission to look at this issue and, um, study and develop ordinances if we see fit to address these potential uses, or we need to pass an ordinance affirmatively that rejects all of the uses in Marine City. Um, let me tell you the, um, a little more about that. Um, I've already prepared and, and given you a draft ordinance of how that looks when you go the prohibition route. If you go the prohibition route, you can always repeal that as we learn more, and you can then go back to allowing some or all of the activities allowed under the law. If you go the route of allowing some or all of the activities under the law, it's very difficult later to prohibit them, uh, without, um, potential exposure to significant litigation. If you do nothing, and you start to get requests for these types of facilities, and we don't have an answer, that has been, uh, the breeding ground for existing litigation as well in, in various communities. Um, so I would ask that the city commission gives direction on this at some point, i.e. send it to the planning commission to analyze ordinance schemes that would allow one or more of these activities, or adopt the prohibition, um, and alert the state of Michigan that you are a prohibited community, and stop the requests before they start for any such uses. Um, there are requirements in this. You, time, place, and manner are three good words that would describe what you're allowed to do with respect to these uses. There's other things. You can regulate signage. You can, you can do a lot of other things. You, you cannot allow one of these facilities in an area that's zoned exclusively residential. And you really should keep these, um, facilities a thousand feet from any school, um, or learning facility. Um, I don't know where that puts you in Marine City. I have one community, when I started drawing the circles, there were no spaces left, um, for these uses. Um, I don't know where it would, um, those radiuses would be drawn, uh, in, in Marine City. But I know you, it, it's not a large, um, um, community in terms of when you start drawing a thousand feet from every school or, or learning activity, uh, center, or, and you exclude residential completely, there's, there's not a lot of space left, but there is some. So you really have, you really had a threshold question at the beginning of this issue is, do you want to open a door to these types of activities in your community? If yes, then we should start a process at the planning commission to study time, place, and manner. And they could report back to you. If you're not inclined, from a legislative policy set, to have these facilities in your community, you should allow the passage of the ordinance that prohibits them entirely. I mean, and, and it's really at this juncture a matter of zoning. I think the earlier speaker who said, we voted to legalize marijuana, yes, for recreational use, that was not a vote to have it in your community. That was a vote to legalize it statewide for recreational uses. There are many, many communities who have taken the prohibition stance with the idea that if in fact later, we learn more about what they're going to issue for regulations, and how they're going to approve people, and, and how it's going to work from, they don't even know yet. And they don't have to have those regs out until December of two thousand nineteen. Um, so a lot of people are just opting out right now and, and wait and see.
So let's say, you know, we, we go with, we're going to prohibit. We go that route. And we, like, down the road here, after we start learning more and more, then we decide, we start thinking, you know, maybe we are going to allow. Can we kind of put the cart before the horse and send it, send it to our planning and send it to them and say, hey, look, we're thinking about that we might
Allow this.
And then have them start the plan so that we are, we have those in place and have all their information set, and then we can maybe
You can prohibit while you're studying.
Okay. Yeah.
Well, there was an article in the, in the Voice from our county sheriff, and, uh, it, and most of the units, I work for other units of government, and most of them are opting out for the same reason that we can pick it up later, but we don't know the rules and regulations that are coming out from the state. So how can we make rules to prohibit it? So, uh, my thought would be just to go ahead and opt out of it.
Chief, I got a question. They haven't truly had a good roadside sobriety yet for marijuana. As, as we've got alcohol down to a science with PBTs and Data Masters and that, but they have not gotten anything for you guys on the road yet.
Well, so the county, I believe, has two or three registered. They call them DREs, which is a drug recognition expert. We just did some legal update with prosecutor, and the prosecutor recommended that any traffic stop involving suspected OUID operating on the influence of a drug to pull in a DRE in to do the roadside testing.
So then our one officer, we'd have to call for backup or assistance from the county or the state police, whoever is certified on duty?
Correct. Because I, I can't simply afford to send one of my officers to do any DRE. It's like a two-week school out in Arizona or something.
It's a rare, it's a, it's a, and, and, you know, it raises the issue of, you know, and I, I know it's an extreme example, but, you know, you pull over a vehicle and you can smell marijuana, but the PBT shows the person is also intoxicated. I mean, the inclination is you just write it up for intoxication and move along, right?
Correct.
If you smell marijuana and the person's not intoxicated, then you have a question. And now you have the question of, if you, if you see an erratic driver and you pull and say, have you been smoking marijuana? I smoked it yesterday. What do you do with that? There's a lot of questions that are unanswered at this point.
Correct. It's all about the level of nanograms in somebody's blood, and it, it's very intricate and detailed and
And the, and the real test that you would have to, the, the kind of testing you would have to do short of the expert appearing on the site would require a warrant. So you'd have to go to the, uh, and to do an intrusive test, uh, blood test or a hair test, um, to conclude that it was marijuana. And it, we, we don't have all these answers yet.
And blood tests is months.
Correct.
To get.
Right. Yes. We've waited up to a year before for a blood test to come back for, for drugs.
We just finished a case where I think we were a year and a month.
Yeah.
Because we didn't, I remember calling saying, why, why, why are we waiting so long on this? Because we don't have the results back yet.
Yep.
But on the other hand, um, it's still fairly illegal. Even though the state approves it statewide, the federal, federal government says it's an illegal drug.
That is correct. That law has not changed.
And, uh, the, I've been to a couple of classes on the one out in Colorado, and that's what they're concerned about is, yes, they, they've got it going, they've got a big, good business going, but yet they've got that on their back that anytime the federal government can come and shut them down.
And their violent crime rate is up.
Right.
Their accident involving, their OUID involving
Stat show everything's up.
Way up.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Would it be possible if we did a prohibition to put a sunset clause in it for a couple of years out? To prohibit for a year to allow the state to figure out what they're going to do, plus another year for us to figure out what we're going to do, but that it forces us to look at it instead of just prohibit it and it never really kind of comes up again?
Well, you can repeal it at any time. Uh, what you're looking for is a trigger.
Yes.
So it forces us to relook at it?
Mm-hmm. It would force you to relook at it once you have more information from
It would, it would be best to approve the, um, prohibition ordinance with that in your motion. Um, in other words, directing that this issue be revisited at a certain time period. I would not want to put that in the ordinance itself. Just as binding on your, on your motion.
Anyone else have any?
So what direction are we going to give them?
If you want the prohibiting ordinance for consideration, I'm not advocating yes or no, but I could have it to you for your next meeting.
I think we've got a, we've got to make a decision. I think we've gotta, we've gotta make a decision, one way or the other.
Yeah. I would urge you to do that. Um, no action is, is a current breeding ground for lawsuits.
Yes, and I think it's clear that everybody's only opting out until we get more information.
You can come back later.
Yes.
Now, if we opt out of recreational and because some of the, I've heard some of the talk about medical, would it be an option to opt in on medical?
You already opted out of medical.
Right.
You, you could revisit that.
Because if somebody's actually needs it for therapy, because they've added so many different ailments now that, you know, it's, it's a therapy for in, uh, I just wondered if it may be
It is not a huge threshold to get a medical marijuana card.
No, I know.
Right. Just have a headache.
And, and we already have the marijuana, the, the medical marijuana and that's been going already. It's the, we, they're using it as a recreational use.
Right. But I'm just wondering, is there any issue with going with the medical?
You could revisit that in a separate issue. There is, there is some consideration the state is, is analyzing whether or not those who were qualified to do medical marijuana are gonna be first in line. Any sort of preference on recreational marijuana. They are looking at that issue because they've already been screened and approved. But you could revisit your position on medical.
But if we approve someone that, if we approve medical and they are on the list, then they can become
You're going to open up a, a can of worms there.
It's either or.
So no action is required on this, this evening. We just, I'll just bring back that ordinance for your consideration. You're not deciding that tonight, but you can take a look at the framework of an ordinance.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business and we've got resolution 10-2019, Northeastern Belt and Anchorway Watersheds 2019 budget.
I'll make a motion to approve this resolution.
Support.
Any questions on it? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Mayor Van Bosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCann?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we're moving on to the parks plan. We need a motion to send this to planning.
I'll make a motion that we send the park planning to the planning commission to create they're going to look at all our parks, but I'd also in there like to exempt any city capital improvement projects and put a moratorium on anything but our projects until we get this finished. Hopefully that makes sense.
Support? Motion support. Any questions on it?
I guess the only thing, it's not so much questions, but I'm just glad that we're kind of gonna try to do this because this will allow us to start looking at our parks, seeing what we have in our parks, how many benches, how much green space we're gonna keep, what type of things, and, and just start planning for our parks and a better, instead of just throwing stuff here and there and everywhere. So I think this is a good way to get going on it and to, to make our parks so that they're all, you know, it all looks good together.
Any other questions or concerns?
So I'm gonna say this because I think it's probably an elephant in the room right now. So does this also include a moratorium on the mosaic project?
Well, we haven't approved that yet.
I know that's a problem.
But I think this will be finished long before that's gonna be back to us, to tell you the truth. I don't think the planning commission is gonna take, I, I don't know. How long do you think it would take you, Joe? No idea?
Depends on how soon we can get the information together.
Yeah.
Uh, who's, who's gonna do the measurements and the counting and so on and so forth. So we'll talk about that next Monday. It's gonna be several weeks. I don't know what the, what timeline for the mosaic project is.
Well, you got, it's gonna be into better, a lot better weather, so it's gonna be a few months.
April, May before you really can start farming.
Does your moratorium exclude the, the larger parks along the waterfront or? I'm not sure what, what's in the capital improvement program at this point.
Well, we're working on that too, but so that's why we're excluding the, our capital improvements, but I guess I can clarify the moratoriums on everything but that particular project at this point. How's that?
Yes, that works.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 opposed? Carry. Moving on to pension ordinance number 2019-003, introduction and first reading. We've needed to make some changes to our pension board because we're running out of people. There's, it's a closed system and, uh, with the retirements we're having, we're needing to pull, reduce the size of the pension board and bring in some of the retirees as they are shareholder and have a, a stake in it. We just need to make some of these changes to make that board more efficient. Right now we have everyone that's, everybody that's still working has to sit on the pension board because to, to follow the ordinance in its entirety. So, and if somebody's off sick, we, we, some of the meetings have been close to being able to have them. So this'll make it a little easier for us and give some of the retirees more of a voice.
Yeah, I think it's a long time coming.
It is. So I
I'll move that we adopt ordinance number 2019-003 for introduction and first reading.
Support? Any questions on it?
Can we waive the second reading?
No, we still
You have to.
We still have time before the next meeting, so.
Oh, yeah, that's
And it'll take us time to get it all set up anyway. Roll call.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCann?
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh?
Yes.
Commissioner carries.
Uh, now we're gonna move on to dispersments, including payroll for $576,839.23. Can I get a motion to approve?
I approve the dispersments, including payroll for the amount of $576,839.23.
Support? Any questions or concerns on payroll or on dispersments? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCann?
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to fund transfer resolution number 02-2019. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
I would say, any questions on it, but I couldn't answer them.
It's just a transfer.
It's a transfer.
Answer.
Any, I'll, uh, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCann?
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And one more fund transfer resolution number 03-2019.
So moved.
Support. Anybody have any questions on it? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCann?
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to the city manager reports and she's off at a conference today. Is there anything that the illustrious city attorney would like to speak on tonight? Are we paying for it?
I'll, I'll pass.
All right. Well, would the assistant city manager like to fill in for her?
I actually would like to thank everyone who came to the first impressions meeting last Thursday. We had a great turnout and I think we, they found out a lot of good information about, um, people that visited Marine City for the first time. So it was a, a good meeting. Um, I want to announce budget workshop meetings coming up in April, the 23rd, 24th, and 25th. And finally, I just got notification that East China School District is going out for a milledge. We've been hearing, um, talk about it, uh, May 7th. So everybody get out and vote.
Yee-haw. Well, I guess we'll move on to commissioner privilege. Mrs. McCann, you wanna start us out?
Sure. Um, I am going to be attending the Blue Waterways of St. Clair. It's a local meeting. It's gonna be at the library on Wednesday, the 20th of February from 3:00 to 4:30. It's very, I, I feel it's very important to, um, support our, our waterways and our, all of our trail systems. We have a lot of, you know, launches and kayak launches and things like that. And, um, I know the people that are running the Blue Waterways and it's, um, they do like some, some interesting kayak events and that kind of stuff. So I'll be attending that. And I also wanted to, um, mention, we, we talked about this at the, or it was mentioned in the, the FIT presentation that we are sitting on a really cool trail system and the trail system is marked as number 20. I don't know if everybody realizes this, but, um, we are in the northern tier. There's three tiers in the United States that go from west to east, east to west. We are on the northern tier. I have been a host of four cross-country bicyclists, not motorcycle people, but bicyclists, that, um, many of them do the Portland to Portland, Portland, Oregon to Portland, Maine. And we are in a unique situation here because we have the ferry. And the ferry crosses, when you cross the ferry and you get into Canada, you cut off a lot of the, is some of the United States, but you can, you can get right to Maine that way. With the ferry being closed, they're being rerouted into, um, to Algonquin, but I've been hosting cyclists for over 12 years. Um, it's a great organization. It's worldwide. I have had people from all over the world stay with me. They're bicyclists just looking for a place to land for the night. The group is called Warm Showers and the reason why it's called Warm Showers is because that's what they're looking for, is just a warm shower. You know, they've been cycling all day. You don't know if they've gotten into headwinds and rain. I have had people come to me at 10 o'clock at night, almost in tears. They've just made it through, you know, 30 or 50 miles of, of really harsh cycling and they, they just wanna land somewhere. So I usually go, you know, a little bit above and beyond. I provide them a meal and, um, laundry facility and that kind of stuff. But if you're interested in hosting, we are in a prime area for hosting, being on the northern tier. You not only see who's coming to you with the website, um, but you can, they, they know you as a host and you can see them as a guest. I have never had even the slightest inkling of anybody, you know, sketchy come to me. And, you know, I'm a single person living alone, so, or I used to live alone. And it's just, it's just a great thing to do. And, and I just want everybody to know that, 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 that number 20 route goes right past us. And so anytime you see a cyclist that is packed with gear, you know that they're going long distance. And, you know, give them a little wave, see if there's anything that you can do for them, you know, especially if you see them on the side of the road. They don't have SAG support. They depend on us, right? So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
I just want to say that I attended the, um, the first impressions meeting also and, uh, was very impressed with how it was presented and, uh, the information that they gave out. Um, it's interesting to see who was there. Of course, I, from my side of the, of the coin, I, you know, I noticed that it was mostly everybody that was, um, business owners and kind of the main people of Marine City. I didn't see a lot of those, which I was hoping more of the community would be there to see and understand what Marine City has to offer for those who are visiting and how it can benefit us. But in, overall, it was a really, a really well-done presentation. I was, um, encouraged by what they had to say. That's all I have to say at this moment.
Yeah, it was a nice meeting. I just looked around and said, "Well, good thing we don't have a quorum here," but we did, but we couldn't do anything. So, but, uh,
Thanks for pointing that out. It was supposed to be hush, hush, but you know.
We said it different, too. But, uh, it, it was a nice thing that they came out and this marijuana thing is, is going the, uh, in different ways. And I'm involved with it, like I said, different communities. And I was quite surprised that, uh, the article that I read on, on that, that they targeted us for not opting out yet because everybody else in the area had. So we'll just have to think what we're doing and what the, and the best for the community.
Um, okay, as a president of the Marine City Area Chamber, I, I, I wanna congratulate the city again on being Spotlight Member of the Month. And really, one of the reasons why the city received the Spotlight Member of the Month is because of the results of the FIT assessment. Um, you know, that's, uh, we got some really good feedback. Um, actually, we were told in some cases that they've never had such good feedback from the panelists. So, um, that's always, that's always a very nice thing to hear about your city. We know it's good. We love it here, but you know, I think it's good for, for all of us. It just helps, it's just reassuring. So congratulations again to the city for that. I also want to point out that the chamber now has, we're, we're at our new home down there on Water Street, right across from, um, right across from, um, the Riviera. And, uh, we have a nice sign out front now and everything, so you can see us there. We're there, we're there. We have office hours and, uh, so you should be able to stop in and get some information if it's needed. If somebody, you see somebody around and they're looking to get some information, you can send them down that way and hopefully it's covered and, you know, they can get the information that they need. And I also want to thank BLB Engraving for, for the sign because they did a great job with it. So.
The Lions Wild Game Dinner is Monday night. If you haven't gotten your tickets, there's, uh, only a few left. And, uh, if you didn't get them, you're gonna miss some really, really good vittles there. Um, it's always a lot of good food and a lot of good raffles and prizes. So, um, I know last time I checked, there was about eight tickets left. So, um, try to make it if you can, but we appreciate all the support for everybody that bought a ticket. And my last question is to you. Have you had any more conversations with our garbage hauler, Amterra?
Yes.
Have you come up with a?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm up the food chain now. I'm working directly with Angelo, the president.
Okay. Because I understand that since we approved it
We've had some issues.
Yeah.
We've had, uh, I have all the complaints. Um, I have the recycling cart issue, but I'm, uh, no longer working with the, the rep who was here. I'm working with the president of the company.
Okay, wonderful.
They completely skipped me this week, last week, as a food business. Completely skipped.
Who?
Well, last week, didn't they, uh, shut everybody down? All the cities were shut down to the
They picked up here, though.
But I don't think they do commercial, do they, Amterra?
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
Amterra is my company.
It's a separate country, right?
Yeah, commercial has to contract individually.
Right, but it's still the same company.
Yeah.
They shut down for two days last week because of the
Nothing? Yes.
Truck's not running.
Okay.
I got another question, I got a question for you. Oh, yeah, it's question night. There is nothing we can do about the red bags for these, uh, these papers, the free papers. Again, they're all over town.
You can opt out, you can call.
I've been plowing them up again.
We can opt out. I mean, we can opt out as a city.
Is there a way, can, uh, can the chief of police write a littering ticket? Cause it's actually littering. I know he's gone. He snuck out on that one.
What do we have to do to opt out? No, I thought we couldn't at one time.
There is a procedure to opt out. There is a procedure to opt out. I mean, you could opt out. The problem with the littering is, when does it become litter? That's...
When it's in the roadway?
Well...
Because I've seen him in the road.
There, there, I've, I've seen him.
They're not even...
Algonquin has opted out.
Algonquin is done.
You should look at it.
St. Clair is done.
They've opted out.
Yeah. You may want to start the process.
It may be on next, next meeting's agenda, so. I just wanted to bring that up, and it's, it's a beautiful community and...
It looks terrible.
It does.
Agreed.
So, I just didn't know, I didn't want to interfere on somebody's freedom of speech to get a BOGO coupon. But, yeah, I wanted to thank everybody that came out to the Fireman's Ball. We had 144th, and the Banquet Center, the Event Center, had one of their first big self-catered, and we had some, we had some issues, and we worked through them, and they seemed to, they've learned a lot. We have a wrap-up meeting with them after everybody's rested a little bit, and we're gonna help them make some changes so they can be a better, have a better host for big events like that, because we still had 340-some people at it, so.
Excellent.
And we had great attendance, and everybody was well-behaved, that's always nice. We've got some, again, inclement weather, good and bad coming in, so we had a meeting on flooding issues again with East China, so hopefully, we can avert it with warm weather,[1779.23]